Recording in progress.
Right. This is the city council meeting of eleven thirty, two thousand and twenty-one. This is basically a reschedule of the meeting from eleven eighteen. So let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Popping in the knee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Okay, council member Dumas here. Council member Elwood.
Here.
Council member Graves.
Here.
Council member Mills.
Here.
Council member Pittman.
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor.
Alright.
I will declare a quorum. Any questions or comments on the agenda? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move that we approve the agenda.
We have a motion, but Lynn made the motion, Linda seconded it. Any discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, the agenda is approved. We don't have any minutes for tonight. Any ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, or memoriam? Hearing none, we will move on to reports. Standing committee, we have no financials yet at this meeting. Special committees, broadband grant application, Jared?
Yeah, about two minutes ago, I got a call from Rodney, our consultant, and he talked to one of the people in charge of the grant program, and although there is a perceived toll on grants because of the state's new broadband consultant, this gentleman told Rodney to, we're ready to submit our grant, and Eureka was ready to submit, that he was going to mail today or send in today. He's going to do it in the morning. This gentleman told him that he will walk these through. This isn't the big grant for implementation, but it will be seventy-five thousand dollars for the feasibility study, engineering study, on what it would take to do fiber optics across Holiday Island. We did meet the three seed co-op, co- lab, for Carroll County. We did meet this morning with the new consultant that Governor Hutchinson has hired. And he's got until May to give his report, so before any of the billions of dollars that the latest infrastructure bill includes, won't be available until sometime next year. So there's kind of some good news and some bad news, but at least we're pretty sure that we're going to get that seventy-five thousand to proceed with the engineering study to see the feasibility, the design plan and everything. And Rodney bounced a gentleman off with, told me this afternoon, that he's committed, even if they say that, you know, you'll have to, you know, use four tons of dynamite to play fiber optics, that he is, that he will work a deal with Carroll County Electric to use their poles to run fiber lines, or erect his own poles, if they want to charge him so much. So, and I think that's some positive news. Oh, he did share, and we need to thank the public. I couldn't count the dots, but there's a map he showed of how many people responded to the speed test, and it was a significant number, and the color of dots went from red, which you didn't have much or any internet, to, I can't remember what color was the top, but the red and the lower spectrum overwhelmed the map. And Eureka, he showed their map, and they didn't do what we did, put it out for people to respond, and they, in the last month or so, they've only had like one person do the speed test. And I shared, and I got about a dozen emails of people, I think for this last time, ranging from two thousand to forty-seven thousand dollars quoted by Cox to run internet, and Lou McAllister, who's the new hired state consultant, was very interested in that, and anyway, I left two copies of those responses, so.
Okay. So we're moving forward, and really, the, you know, the engineering study is going to be required anyway.
Yeah. But if we had to wait, you know, till this guy does his report, I mean, that would put us back six months or longer. So that's some good news that he got, that we'll at least have that out of the way when we get started applying for the implementation funding.
Okay. Thanks for your work on that. Lynn, you want to give a little summary of what we've been doing on the planning commission?
The most recent activity from the city planning commission, at least from the last three meetings, is focused on looking at zoning regulations. We selected a community that had some, we thought, well-thought, well-written regulations that we've been using as a model, and going through the features that we think are important to Holiday Island, especially how they align with the covenants that we have in place. And the focus that we have primarily is on the features about residential housing first. We want to get those in code form and get them to a point where we can get them approved on the books, and then we can work on the commercial stuff to follow that. What we have is about sixty-six pages of documentation, and we're through fifty-some pages, so we're about to the end of it for our first blush. And then I have a lot of work to do to do the sorting, to do the numbering, to put it in code format, and to make sure we implement all the notes that we've been making going along. So it's progress that I think we're doing quite well, because it's a big project, but we know we're not reinventing the wheel, that it's out there to use from now.
Did we set another meeting date?
Yes, November fourteenth, one P M. Excuse me, December fourteenth, one P M. That's the second Tuesday in the month.
That's our regular meeting date, but we moved it up to one o'clock from three o'clock.
Okay. That reminds me that this new state consultant wants Eureka and Holiday Island to schedule a public meeting, inviting the public to come in and meet him, and let him hear firsthand. So I'm working with Sandy to come up with an agreeable date.
Just one meeting with the two communities together?
No, same day. He can come here first and go down there, or vice versa.
Alright. Okay. Moving on then to old business, we have none. New business. I've made some prepared statements here because of the somewhat controversial nature of what we're going to be covering here in the next couple of minutes, and I didn't want to forget anything, and I didn't want to get my message wrong. So I'm going to read, I should have a miner's hat on the light, but I'll start out by addressing the Zoom meeting and the impact that that had on our public meeting. Regarding the issue of the Zoom meeting from the eighteenth, and the impact that the actions taken, and the impact on the actions taken in that meeting, FOIA allows for video Zoom meetings as a substitute for in-person meetings only when the governor has an emergency declared. In the case of the meeting on the eighteenth, there was no emergency declaration enforced. So the fact that in-person attendance was available, and several people were in attendance, the meeting met the requirements for a public meeting. Going forward, Zoom will be done in broadcast mode only, meaning that no public input will be solicited over Zoom. Since our typical meeting attendance, since our typical meeting attendance, in person and Zoom combined, has been less than the capacity of the boardroom, this should not be an issue. So in actuality, you know, if you look at the legal side of it, you know, Zoom was intended only to be used anyway during, as an official way of communicating or conducting business while the emergency was declared. So now, I would read that to mean that it cannot be used as an official means of conducting business, because there is no, there is no emergency in place. However, there's no problem with us offering it as a courtesy. So going forward, that's what we're going to do.
Well, I think you have to say we're going to present a resolution. We'll have to talk it in.
Yes. Yeah, we will, we will address that. We will modify or change the resolution that we passed very early on in our infancy as to how we were going to conduct the public meetings. Now, we can move on to ordinance two thousand and twenty-one oh fifteen, the next item on the agenda. Relative to the vote on twenty, for two thousand and twenty-one oh fifteen, voting for council members at large, the vote was taken, but declaring the ordinance as being passed was held up pending resolution as to how many votes were required to pass. After consulting with our attorney, if the law specifies that a two-thirds vote of the council is required for passage, in our case, it would require four votes. However, in the case of the ordinance in question, only a majority of the council is required, or three votes. So I'm going to ask the recorder to advise everyone as to how the vote came out at the last meeting.
Yes, the vote to approve the ordinance, which had been moved by Jerry and seconded by Kim, was the ayes were council members Graves, Mills, and Pittman, and the nays were council members Dumas and Elwood.
So the requirement of a majority was met, so the motion, or the ordinance passes, and Wes and I will sign that tonight, and that will be our official method of electing, pending any other further action by the council, which leads us to ordinance, the next item on the agenda, which is.
That has to go over to the comm, right?
At some point.
I thought people were going to get a chance to voice their opinions on that.
Not on two thousand and twenty-one oh fifteen, it's already been voted on.
I said like some of the.
I am going to make a ruling here that anyone from the public that wants to speak needs to be recognized by me, and come up to the podium, state their name and address, and then speak their, state their comment. We're not just going to have people shouting from the gallery. It gets totally out of control. So, and at this point, I'm not, I'm not opening the floor to public comment yet. Two thousand and twenty-one oh eight, oh fifteen was discussed, voted on, and passed in the last meeting. It is an approved ordinance. Now we'll move on to ordinance two thousand and twenty-one oh eighteen. In my opinion, it is my opinion, and this is me speaking here, it is my opinion that the decisions made by the council should be respected, even if you do not agree with the decision. I think we have to be very careful about council members submitting a counter-ordinance for consideration in the event that they feel the vote went the wrong way. However, since this is turning out to be a somewhat controversial issue, and since any council member has the right to propose an ordinance, we're going to move forward with taking up ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash zero eighteen as the next agenda item. Also, since this is a somewhat controversial issue, I will not call for a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings by title only. I will read the ordinance in full, after which I will call for a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. If there is a second, I will open it up for discussion with council members having the first opportunity to speak. I will then open the discussion up to the public. I ask that members of the public that wish to speak come to the podium, state their name and address, and make their comments. Please limit comments to three minutes. At some point, I may choose to cut off discussion. No vote will be taken on the ordinance tonight. I will ask for a motion, and a second, and a vote to move the ordinance to the second reading. The vote, the vote on the ordinance itself will be taken after the third reading. That will give people plenty of time to express their opinion to the council members. There's no reason for us to rush this through. We voted on it the last time because we didn't really anticipate it, that it was going to be controversial, with the ordinance was proposed the way it was simply because seventy-eight percent of the cities do it that way, and a hundred percent of the cities in Carroll County do it that way. However, since it seems to be a hot button issue here in Holiday Island, we will take up ordinance two thousand and twenty-one oh eighteen. So.
Can I inject a question to you? When does this have to go to the county so they know what we're doing? Do we have a date that it's due to the county?
Probably February, March.
February, okay.
It has to be before the primaries.
Right, that's what I was assuming.
Did we even have primaries for council?
Well, we don't have primaries at county.
Okay.
That's a political party.
Yeah.
So I am going to read ordinance two thousand and twenty-one oh eighteen.
We could have primaries, so.
They're not.
Well, we have plenty of time. We can get three readings of this in time to get it to the council. Ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash zero eighteen, an ordinance establishing method for electing city council members by ward. Whereas the city, whereas the city of Holiday Island, the city of the second class adopted ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero seven, which established three wards for the city of Holiday Island on October nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-one, and whereas Arkansas statute ACA fourteen dash forty-four dash one oh three eighty-two requires that the qualified electors of every city of the second class shall elect per ward of the city two council members who shall be designated as council member number one and council member number two of the ward, and whereas Arkansas statute ACA fourteen forty-four one oh three provides for three methods of electing city council members, and whereas ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash zero one five, establishing method for electing city council members by ward, was passed on November tenth, on November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and not effective for thirty days following, and not yet filed with Carroll County Clerk. And whereas citizens of Holiday Island have publicly expressed support for electing their city council members by, by only the voters residing within their respective ward, while a minority of public comments have been expressed supporting at-large voting for city council members. And whereas, after due consideration, the city council has chosen to reconsider the election method of city council members that will best represent the qualified electors of Holiday Island. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash zero one five, passed on November eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one, shall be repealed in full, that two council members shall be elected by ward from candidates that reside in the ward from which the candidates seek to be elected, that Arkansas statute ACA fourteen forty-four one oh three C one A shall be adopted for the method of election of city council members for Holiday Island, Arkansas, that both council members number one and council member number two from each ward shall be voted upon by only the qualified electors residing within the ward from which the person is a candidate, passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this thirty day of November two thousand and twenty-one. That date will be changed eventually to the, to the, the date of the third reading. So that's the proposed ordinance, and let's see. I will now call for a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance.
I'll move that we propose this ordinance for adoption.
Then move to approve the ordinance. We'll have a second.
I'll second it, yeah.
Pat seconded it. Now we will open it up, let's see. No, we have to, we have to vote on, no.
We don't vote. We don't vote until the third.
Let me, I wrote this out so we get it straight here.
Is that to put it on the table for discussion?
Yeah, that's what we, you have to put that to a vote.
Yeah, we were voting on discussing it.
Yeah. Yes. We don't have to vote right now. We have a motion and a second, and at this point, I can open it for discussion.
No, can't. I thought we had to have a motion to. To bring it to the, bring it for the discussion. We've done that on every ordinance we, you know, considered.
Yeah, I read through Robert Rules of Order, and I thought I had it straight, and it said that. It said that if you're going to do three readings, that, that after the motion, well, actually, I did say a vote, but the vote, the motion is going to have to change, and you're going to have to withdraw your motion, because it's not, it can't be a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Well, I have a point of order question, and we put it on the agenda for discussion and consideration, why does it need a motion? We approved the agenda already.
We've done that on every.
I know, but I'm just, for a point of order, so we get it straight. We approved the agenda to consider this, this ordinance. Why does it need a motion for discussion? I mean, to put it on the floor? I don't know the answer to the question, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, a question. I read it someplace. I mean, that's never, ever been an issue, that we've done this on every ordinance. I think it's in the M L B.
It's the last meeting.
I think it's in that M L B.
Okay.
We did.
Well, last meeting, we did it because we were trying to suspend the rule.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, the meeting before that, or it was a meeting before that, but we had a discussion, but we don't need to offer the ordinances and have it proposed and voted on whether we're going to discuss it or not. That's what my reflection is.
So if, if the council agrees, we will, we will, we will, we won't entertain a motion at this point.
You just, you just did it. You just did it. You don't propose the motion.
It, yeah, I, I read the motion, I read the ordinance.
That's right, you asked for a motion, which Lynn did, and a second, which Pat did. And you read it, and then you read the, so that's what, that's the process. And every, and we've done that on every resolution and ordinance that we do, that we put it up to.
But a motion, in the past, if we weren't suspending the rules, motion was always to put the ordinance on the floor for consideration, not to pass the ordinance.
Right.
The motion that was just made was to pass the ordinance.
Okay, right now, it's just. I don't think that's what we wanted to do. I just don't think we should take public discussion until we voted to put it on the floor for discussion.
Okay, then.
We'll present a motion.
Yeah, we'll draw your initial motion and make a motion to put it on the floor for discussion.
I'll move that we put ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash eighteen on the floor for discussion.
I second it, I thought that's what we were doing anyway, so.
So you're seconding it?
Yes, yes.
Alright. Any discussion on that motion? And vote, or roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote. Council member Dumas?
Aye.
Council member Elwood?
Aye.
Council member Graves?
Aye.
Council member Mills?
Aye.
Council member Pittman?
Yep.
Three ayes and two nays, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so the motion passed, so now we can open the floor for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have some prepared comments.
Okay.
Would you like a copy? If you'd, if you for your record, you can pass that group down, see if it's turned around. I too have prepared comments because I don't want to miss my, the points I want to make. I wasn't as prepared last meeting as I am now. The title of my comments are, there's a bias in at-large elections. Some background and how it works. Supreme Court Justice Ginsburg cited at-large voting as a preeminent second-generation way to deny equal opportunity for voters and candidates. Under these winner-take-all rules of at-large voting, a slim majority of voters can control one-hundred percent of elected seats, and in consequence typically result in politically homogenous elected bodies. Winner-take-all systems are an acronism in the modern world, as nearly every virgin democracy has rejected their use. They were introduced to America by the British during the colonial era, and are virtually unknown in other developed countries. Their failings lie at the root of many of our current political problems. Congress has banned at-large voting for all federal elections in passage of the nineteen sixty-five Voting Rights Act. It's been discarded by most states in state elections. No voting has been subject to moral litigation for its discriminatory, discriminatory impact on local elections. Fewer and fewer jurisdictions still practice at-large voting because courts and other decision-makers have recognized that discriminatory electoral methods, like at-large voting can be, exacerbate the conflicts in a community due to socioeconomic and other disparities in life opportunities between neighborhoods of a community. At-large voting on candidates of other wards involves a subtle form of gerrymandering. An at-large election system is an advantage to any majority over any minority. In theory, the at-large method allows for an organized majority to elect all candidates of its choice. Minority-binned groups are powerless to elect any candidates. In such circumstances, an elected council member may be less effective in representing the interests of a resident ward because of the needs and wants of majority support of the polls from the other, or from those outside the ward. In a system of at-large voting, the entire set of qualified voters of Holiday Island, only fifty percent plus one voters can, if they mostly support the same candidates, win all their chosen seats in all the wards of Holiday Island. In fact, the majority vote, the majority bloc doesn't even have to compose fifty percent of the electorate. All that's needed is for a group of like opinions to vote cohesively enough to build up an insurmountable lead over the rest of the field. Their favorite candidates will pick up plenty of other votes. Their favorite candidates will pick up plenty of other votes as a secondary choice of voters who'd really prefer other candidates. In another scenario, at-large voting could result in a candidate winning a seat that he did not receive any votes from the voters in the candidate's ward. Per the Arkansas statutes, Holiday Island has been divided into wards. An at-large election is for a political area that is not subdivided into wards. These are objections, there are objections to at-large elections because they remove a direct level of responsibility from the local council members. The election at large makes responsibility to council build a more diffuse. In the future, the majority of voters in given ward could see their favorite candidates lose election after election as a result of implementing at-large voting. The most practical and reasonable effective way for ensuring that individual ward voters have equal opportunity to elect council members for their ward is to not allow at-large voting on their candidates. It's never wrong to do the right thing. On page two of that handout, I have an illustration. Ward X has council member position one and also number two, but this illustration is for council member one. Two individuals, I'll call them candidate A and B, choose to run for council member number one in Ward X. With at-large voting, candidate A receives three hundred votes from the Ward X voters and one hundred for candidate B. In Ward Y, they split the vote to one hundred, two hundred. But the group in Ward Z had a favorite in candidate B having three hundred fifty votes cast versus fifty for A. The total is six hundred and fifty for B, five fifty for A. So the, the voters of Ward X, their three hundred votes don't count, the six fifty from the total's community does. So Ward X doesn't get the candidate they picked. That's the illustration that illustrates the issue with at-large voting. That concludes my comments.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, I'll give it a try. I might do a history lesson, but, um... Okay, one thing that I think is missing in this, uh, when we determined the wards, there were roughly seven hundred seventy-five residents in each. Candidates must live in the ward from which they are elected, given each ward two council contact, contacts. All the council members vote on issues impacting the entire city. At-large voting gives all voters a say in who is elected and held accountable to all voters for their vote. And, I mean, that's, that's my position on the review. And, uh, that's where I am.
Any other council members want to comment?
Um, um, if, first of all, uh, in the ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one eight, I would question the factual content of the fifth whereas that says the citizens of Holiday Island have since expressed an overwhelming support for electing their council members by only the voters residing in their respective ward. Yeah, we've heard a lot of comments on social media, but we have no idea that's an overwhelming support.
There is one. I drafted the ordinance because at the time I drafted it, I had seven calls or face-to-face conversations with individuals that all supported this point of view. None supported at-large. Since then, my tally is twelve in favor of this and one, excuse me, two against. So to me, that's overwhelming, they're twelve to two odds, that's overwhelming.
Is there, we, there, we haven't done an election on it to see what people really think?
But everybody has had an equal opportunity to comment. Everybody in...
There are a lot of people that don't use Facebook.
Well...
Dan, you, you, I don't know if, I was gonna ask it when you brought this up, but you didn't read that part, you didn't mention overwhelmingly, uh, expressed. You left that terminology out.
Yes, Dan read the version that I sent to him about an hour after the first version. And so it was, I took the words that we have before us overwhelmingly to a majority than minority.
I, I don't think you could say that, I, I really don't.
I don't either, I mean, does it matter? As long as we say there's an interest, I mean, we're not gonna take a vote to see if it's a majority or...
No, I'm just, I'm just saying that the ordinance suggests that...
I know.
We know there was a certain majority and we don't know that.
I just don't see why somebody thinks that they, you know, change the election. I, I, um, there, you look at the three wards that we have, you know, we delineated, and the people in them are, you know, there's a mixture, you know, in all of them. Um, and myself, I would rather be able to vote for all six candidates because you're trying, you're wanting to put people in, on the council that are gonna look to the best interests of Holiday Island. And if, I, I just don't see what, what the hang-up is. I don't see why anybody thinks that they would have an advantage. I, I don't see, I don't see the advantage of an election by wards, I read that. Um, it's the, we don't have minorities, and that's, that's what this is all referencing, uh, where there's a possibility of gerrymandering the districts, et cetera. Uh, I mean, I don't think it's necessarily talking about a minority as defined in federal statutes, a minority opinion. A minority opinion could be another white Caucasian like me.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, we're not talking about racial minorities. We're talking about minority opinions.
Well, well, I, every board has virtually the same number of people.
I think that is true, and...
And, and Lynn, uh, at some point, this starts out talking about districts and, uh, federal elections, and then it transfer, transitions, uh...
Yeah, I'll, I'll...
Is that your opinion, or is that something found in your research?
Well, the research's opinion from this material that I searched through and the highlights I made, I took out segments of each one of them. It's a fact that, that, uh, districts, voting districts are created by states for state elections. It's a fact it's done for federal.
And right.
And it's a fact that they started out in many states to be at-large elections, and they're trending toward, uh, uh...
That's right, but you're talking about municipal elections.
Mm-hmm.
E- every municipality in this county, seventy-eight percent of them in the state.
That means twenty-two percent don't do it that way.
Well, that's not very well in order.
For reasons.
Yeah, okay.
It's a dilution of vote is what, that I'm concerned about. And, uh, Pat said it right, it's not, it's not a minority of race, it's a minority of opinion about what the city might do in a certain area, or a certain candidate might support a certain point of view that a majority in the rest of the community supports, and that community that they're, that they reside in doesn't necessarily have an opinion, and they can't pick their representative to represent, represent their opinion if you have at-large voting, that's my opinion. You dilute their vote by allowing all twelve hundred electors or whatever number we have.
I mean, again, I'll counter, uh, counter, counter that with, every one of us should be accountable to the entire electorate. And, and we won't, we won't be. We absolutely won't be.
Then why did the state require we divide our community into wards and pick candidates that reside in it? Why did they do that?
Because they want you to have a representative that you can go to. And we will, either way we go.
Right, it doesn't matter, that part isn't insane, but if we're gonna take the time and the effort of the state to say you need to have two people from your ward represent you, why not have the people in that ward pick them?
Yeah. Okay, let me, let me say my other speech then, too.
Sure.
Okay. My view is that if a resident only gets to vote on two representatives from their ward, we are actually diluting their vote, the opposite of, of your thought. We are diluting their vote, since all six members of the council will be deciding on all the issues before the council. Just having the two members from your ward pushing and voting for a particular issue will not be enough of a vote to get something passed. You will need a majority consensus of all six of the council members. If there's a tie, of course, the mayor will break the tie. Also, our wards are divided along street boundaries. If we are only allowed to vote on the council members running in our ward, in some cases, a resident would not be able to vote for a close friend or a neighbor who lives across the street from them, who would perhaps see issues the same as they. I do believe that voting by ward has some merit in large cities, however, the council has received information that all of the cities of Carroll County vote for ward members at-large versus just by the residents of their ward, and seventy-eight percent of the cities in Arkansas also vote this way. And the National League of Cities did a survey that showed across the nation, sixty-six percent of cities nationwide also voted ward council members at-large. And also, to be clear, regardless of the manner of voting, the city council of Holiday Island will have two members who are residents of each ward. So everyone will be represented by two ward residents. Under... Yeah, and under the ordinance that we passed, uh, on the, whatever date that was, the seventeen... All residents of Holiday Island would have an opportunity to vote on each ward's candidate. And let me also cite, uh, something that stood out to me and has for the last several years. Uh, we have a local election, uh, right here in our county where our representatives are voted on by just the residents of that, of the jurisdiction, and this would be the Carroll County Forum Court. We are represented by only one of the eleven JPs sitting on that court, and we only get to vote on candidates for that single JP position, and they have to represent our in, interests. In every instance, I can recall, over the last fifteen years, where our JP has put forth an ordinance to address a problem we had in Holiday Island, the forum court voted it down. Because we just have one vote secured, and the rest of the JPs usually don't fully appreciate our problems. I'm not sure it would've changed the outcome if we'd had an opportunity to vote for the other JPs, but I can sure tell you, they had no skin in our game. I would like to think if the other JPs had to depend on the goodwill of the citizens of Holiday Island and had to answer in part to us for their decisions, they might have taken our needs more into consideration.
Don't sit.
I, I don't have a vote in this, and I'm going to try my darkest not to have an opinion, not to express an opinion, because I really don't have a strong opinion. I don't know, I think in some cases, you know, making, you know, being assured that the people in the ward gets, gets their, you know, candidates elected is, is, is gonna work in their favor, and in some cases, it's probably gonna work against them, so, I mean... But I do wanna make a, a kind of a, a point about the statistics of, you know, all of the cities in Carroll County and seventy-eight percent of the cities in Arkansas and, and sixty-six percent of the cities nationwide. By and large, that could be simply because these cities have been in existence since the eighteen hundreds, and that's the way it's always been, and it would take an overt action by somebody to change the voting method, which would probably be a monumental undertaking in a large metropolitan area to get people to agree to change the voting method. You know, if you looked at, if you looked at the statistics of, you know, cities that were incorporated in the last twenty-five years, I wonder if the, you know, if, if it would align the same way. I don't know the answer to that, but I know the statistics could be biased by the fact of my history, you know, the way it was set up when the city was formed and nobody ever made an attempt to change it.
It's, yeah, but all you had to do is set out another ordinance and even change it. I mean, it is, it's insurmountable if it isn't working.
I mean, if there was such, such inequities, somebody would've changed it.
Yeah, maybe, you know, I, I don't know.
Right. I don't know about that.
Most, I, I can imagine that the majority of the people that live in these other cities don't even know that there's an alternative. You know, the situation has never came up that would cause them to research the, the code to see if there's even an option.
Well, really, and when you think about even Holiday Island and the kind of issues that come up before the council, give me an example of an issue that would be controversial on a ward boundary basis.
The, you know, one, one last...
Can anybody think of something?
One last comment, and this, this again is not taking a side on this. But one of the reasons why, and Wes and I talked about this, you know, um, one of the reasons why, um, we're, why I was proposing that we do this in three readings and take some time is because of that paragraph about, uh, the, you know, the overwhelming number of people that have expressed an interest, have expressed an interest in this, you know, in voting by ward. This will give all the other council members ample opportunity to solicit feedback and, uh, and, you know, I would caution you to, you know, do it randomly, don't, if you are gonna solicit feedback, don't go out and handpick your, um, your responses. But seriously, do it, do some, do some homework.
Well, yeah.
And find out what the, what the, the rest of the people actually think.
When I first started talking to this, talking about this to friends of mine, uh, they were totally misinformed. They thought at-large meant that you, you might not even wind up with a representative from your ward.
Like high school elections.
Yeah, exactly, that's what they were confounding into.
Comments that were confounding the high school election.
So I think that, that a lot of people are misinformed.
There was one post, the person said, uh, I would support, uh, at, at-large voting if the candidates had to reside in the ward. I mean, yeah, that's, that's exactly what...
I mean, you have to read the fine print at least to get it.
That there was another ordinance already passed.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, can we open it up to, all right, uh, open it up to the floor?
Yeah.
Let me turn the camera on.
You don't see me stumbling.
And speak loud enough, the, the mic is over here, so...
Your voice is carried.
Yeah, probably, probably.
Rick Chambers, floor twelve, run dry. Um, I thought I said about everything I wanted to say on the eighteen. I wanna come to you today and, um, thank Lynn for his leadership here, because I think that he's showing true leadership, okay? I understand Ms. Linda's point about a vast majority, whatever you wanna call it, or whatever term you wanna use, but yet there is a majority. Lynn has heard from numerous people, I forget his number, but he's only come up with two that opposed, only two. There's still a significant majority right there, okay? You can look at the audience here. I don't know who's for or who's against, they may tell you. Uh, but I'd say there's pretty good representation here, okay? I've heard comments about people wanting to represent the entire community. I appreciate that, we should, we all should. Well, I will ask those that wanna, that wanna represent the entire community, how many people have you reached out to? How many people have you actually talked to? How many phone calls have you made? How many phone calls have you made? How many people has actually reached out to you to share their opinion? If you're going to represent this community, get out there and represent them, okay?
Rose is looking all wobbly, does he there?
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just speaking plain, so please pardon, no offense intended. There was talk about minorities. I came from South Arkansas where there was a lot of issues, racial issues, things of this nature there. Thankfully, we don't have that here. But what we do have is people on opposite ends of a, of a financial spectrum, if you want to call it such. You have people of means, that's got a lot of money. I'm not one of those, I promise you. I work for the state of Arkansas. And you have people that have recently, recently decided whether they're going to eat this week or pay their assessment. I know a couple of those people. I know people that's wondering here in this community whether they're going to have enough firewood to stay warm this winter. I know those people too. I worry about those. Has anybody heard from those people what they want, is representation? The one thing I do know, and I've never been a political or a community-involved kind of person. I've always liked to stay home, mind my own business. That's it, pretty simple. But the one thing that I've learned about Holiday Island.
Kinda. We'll give you another...
Thank you, I'll wrap it up, I promise. The one thing I've learned about Holiday Island is we're very, very divisive. We're a divided community. Everybody needs a seat at the table. And the only way we're going to make sure that everybody has a seat at the table and bring this division together is have ward-elected representatives. Thank you.
Al Solak, twenty-two Buckskin Lane. First of all, I think we need to look at what Mayor Key said to start with. If you have an ordinance, and you pass the ordinance, and then all of a sudden, a bunch of people get on the phone and say, "I don't want that, I don't want that." We pull that ordinance back? We can do that with every law that we pass in Holiday Island for the next ten, twenty years? As Linda said, you know, you could end up with a division of two people. You're worried about, you know, that division's poorer over there. So those two people, and over here, you've got these four people in the rich wards. They're not going to work together because they don't vote together. Some people ask me something, what kind of community do you want? Well, I can't tell you what kind of community you want, but I could give you a few ideas of what I would like. I'd like where people quit rehashing the past and work towards the future. You know, recently, I brought up something to somebody about a past election. And they said, "Oh, that's over, you got to get over that." Okay, that's a two-way street, everybody needs to get over it. I want a city where I vote for six council members who have the idea of improving Holiday Island. And then those six council members get together with the other council members from the other wards, and they work together. You have two people from Ward Three. They need, they want to get Ward Three better. They need to work with Ward One and Ward Two. Stop the decisiveness, stop the divisiveness. Get along. Get past the fact that, you know, we are incorporated now. It went through. Voting at-large is a method used in every city in Carroll County. It obviously has some good ideas. Recently, Councilman Dumus mentioned that we're following the plan of ordinances in this other community, which is a model community. I would ask you this week to check if that model community has voting at-large. And as far as a overwhelming majority, I think the number was put out at twenty. I see ten here tonight. We only had two against, because we're not vocal enough. We'll be cranking up the phone bank next week, I guess, if that's what you need. But out of two thousand people, about sixteen hundred voters that we had decided that we wanted to be a city, twenty people decide. We pull an ordinance back, we throw out everything we did before. For twenty people, I don't think that's going to pass in the long run. That's not going to be a good standard to set for the community. Thank you.
I'm going to beg your indulgence a little bit. I have a dang near death from COVID earlier this year, so I kind of run out of breath from time to time. I'm Gerald Long. I live at Five Chickasaw Place in Indian Hills. I have lived under a situation where we had at-large voting. When I lived in Fort Worth in a Republican improvement district. There were seven people on that council voted at at-large. I lived on the poorer side. We weren't poor by any means, but we were not the big, rich, four, five thousand foot, or square foot houses. They had a one-person majority on that side. Not one thing ever got done on my side, not one. We were privileged to pay for a great big fountain and a stone wall with a waterfall on it for that, the other side. And we were privileged to pay for a pavilion on their side of the park. Want to talk about a history lesson? Benjamin Franklin lived in London from seventeen fifty to seventeen seventy-five. Lord North was the Prime Minister of Great Britain during that time. And he told Franklin, he said, "There is no reason for you to be upset in the colonies. You have representation in Parliament." And we did. We had representation in Parliament, handpicked by the people who were in London. Franklin said, "How can someone represent me that I didn't send to Parliament?" He was right. He was absolutely right. And I don't care, I want to quote my mother. "If everybody else jumped off the bridge, or seventy-six percent of the people jumped off the bridge, would you go with them?" Thank you very much.
Greg Koper, sixty-one Lakeside. First of all, first thing I want to ask is, we're going to be electing six new council members, and then we're going to keep the five that we have here? So there would be a total of eleven, or where are we going to be? Okay, so it would be, it would just be six? And then, so then Dan would have the deciding vote as mayor, in case of a tie? Well, but he is mayor, that's what I'm saying. But you're going to have six council members, and then Dan would be, would be a tiebreaker. Just trying to understand how we've got it laid out, that's all. I do want to thank Lynn for researching all that. I do think that the, we do need to vote by wards. You know, you look at all of our other, you know, we, we vote for state representatives. We have state representatives that represent our areas. We don't vote for the guy that's down in Hot Springs. We don't vote for the guy that's in Little Rock. We vote for the people that are in our areas to represent us. And that's the way, that's the way it should be. This at-large thing, I just don't think is, is any good at all. And to say that, as a very good point that Dan made, it's like, Linda, you threw out some numbers there of this, and this, and this. And it's like, how do we know what has been done in the last fifteen to twenty years, twenty-five years? Yeah, you can go back and say, "Yeah, we've done, done this," and so many other times. I've always heard, "Well, that's the way we've always done it." Well, some things need to change, and this is one of them that, that needs to. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I won't take a whole lot of time. Sharon Tideroud, sixty-one Lakeside Drive. There are a lot of people on Holiday Island that feel they are not represented. And I think the in-ward voting would help people to feel like they're represented. And it doesn't mean that all six council members can't come together and make decisions and represent everybody. It's just I think that we need to do the in-ward voting so people feel like they're being represented. I think that's the fair thing to do. And I agree one hundred percent with Lynn. Thank you.
I want to just point out a couple of things that I do agree with.
Can you say your name, Evan?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mavis Wilks, twenty-nine Venus Avenue. I want to point out a couple of things that I've heard tonight that I do absolutely, truly agree with. You're talking about the few people that have shown up here. You're saying that's not very many people. Do you know why there is not that many people here to represent Holiday Island? Because you don't listen. You don't listen. I've been to the BOC meetings. I've sat there, and I've listened to people go to the microphone and talk, and say, "This is what needs to be changed. This is where the problem is." Because I live in this area, I know what the problem is. What are you doing? You're sitting there visiting with each other? You're sleeping? You're making little notes? You're passing it from one to the other? We don't have representation here. We are not represented. I made a remark on Holiday Island the other day in just a broad sense of what I wanted to say. And I met with one person who replied, "We are tired of the trailer trash north." Well, I'm not trailer trash. I do live in a trailer, because that's what I could afford. I can't live on Holiday Island Drive because I don't have that kind of money. I sold everything I had in Oklahoma and moved up here because I thought this was a better place to live. And I can tell you now, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and I'm on my fourth year up here, I have regretted getting rid of everything I owned and moved up here because of the way we, trailer trash, are treated. We don't have representation. You can tell that by the way the public comes in. Where do they go? They go to the bigger places. They don't come to Holiday Island because they're not welcome. They're not welcome. The businesses are falling down because they're not supported. Corazon Restaurant is closing because they're not supported. Why? Because you have a restaurant and a clubhouse? You have a, you have a snack bar?
Time, you ladies.
Am I out of time?
Yes, please.
Okay. But this is why, this is why Holiday Island is not living, because it's not represented truly. Thank you.
Any other comments? One more minute.
Greg Koper from sixty-one Lakeside. I think a very good point. I think you see, all the people that have spoken tonight have all spoken against at-large. This is what your people here want.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm going to move on then, and I'm going to...
Dan, you want to take a raised hand from the Zoom audience? We have Rebecca Sherman. Is there any way you can unmute yourself, Rebecca? Because I don't understand what you're putting in chat. You're unmuted, according to my screen. She does not have a mic. So I will read what she wrote, but it doesn't... Well, she wondered, "Mavis Wilks spelling on Venus." I guess you spell your name W-I-L-K-S?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hope that helps. And then she says, "Voter registration needed to inform." I don't understand what that means.
Well, the Election Commission will have to notify all residents here, all the eligible voters, what ward they live in.
That's probably the point.
That's part of the Congress's responsibility.
I had a long discussion with Connie Doss on how this would be done if, if we adopted the ordinance. On the voter registration records, it will, they indicated what ward you reside in. So when you go vote, you, and register or sign up to vote, you will be given a barcode that is then taken and stuck into, inserted into the voting machine. And that will bring up the ballot for you to vote based on where you reside.
So you get it when you sign in to vote at the...
I don't think so. She talked about this barcode, and then you insert that into the voting machine, and...
It calls up the ballot?
It brings up the ballot on, on the machine for you, for your vote, and for your residents.
Am I supposed to get this in the mail and bring it with me?
No, no.
Well, I went and voted the last time at the Harris Center over there. They gave us something to put in the ballot to make calls of the school board voting. So they give it to you right there.
Yeah, you get on this barcode. And I'm not sure that your ballot is on, on the scene that you get to insert in the machine. I think it comes up on the machine, then your ballot. And you, you cast your votes, and then it will print out the completed ballot for you to review, to see if you agree with that's how you wanted to vote. If it's not, you start over, and it will print another one out. You can do that twice, the third, it'll, it'll do that twice, the third time you don't get. But then, you take this printed ballot and put it into, I think you insert it into the voting, into a tally machine.
Correct.
The tally's...
Yeah, they can do that.
And you can go, you don't have to go to your ward in Carroll County. You can go to any place in the county and vote. You could go to Oak Grove or Blue Eye, or wherever you want to vote. So when they put this in the machine, it'll print out, the voting machine will print out a ballot based on your residence here.
From a, from an electronic standpoint, that's probably true. But I doubt whether Blue Eye will have the voter registration.
That's probably right.
Or the other. So I would recommend you go to...
She didn't get to Oak Grove, so they must have a present there.
Okay.
Back to Rebecca, she wrote something else here. Oh, people don't understand, this is from Rebecca Sherman. People don't understand this ward voting, this ward voting is for property owners and renters. I'm sure...
It's for registered voters.
Registered voters, so they both have to register if they want to vote. But it's not, it's not just property owners, renters.
It's not based on property ownership.
It doesn't have anything to do with property ownership.
And then she wants to know, she has a question. How many council people right now have gotten feedback from both property owners and renters?
I've had no renters contact me.
I have no idea that ones that contact me.
I have had no renters contact me.
Okay, I'm going to cut off the discussion now. We have a lot of other agenda stuff to cover. So remember, the whole point of having three readings is to give all the council members more time to get feedback and form a, you know, have an informed opinion. more time to get feedback and form a, you know, have an informed opinion about what people really think.
I'd take exception that we haven't done that. We need to keep a scorecard. But I guess we will.
I will ask, I will now ask for a motion, a second, and a vote to move the ordinance to the second reading.
So move.
Then made a motion to move the ordinance to the second reading. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Pat seconded it. We'll call a vote. Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves? Councilmember Mills? Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
Nope. The motion does not carry. The ordinance is not moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to present your ordinance for consideration.
Okay, moving on. The next agenda item is adopting building code ordinance 2021-017. Adopting the building code. Now I gotta get my other cheat sheet out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I ask a question? I'm Mark Talbot, Nine Horseshoe Drive. Forgive me because I'm not first in procedures and so forth. When you say the ordinance is, that this is not moving forward, does that mean that to a second reading or what does that mean?
It means it's dead.
Okay, so what is the next process that the ordinance has passed or... I'm sorry, I just...
They never tell them what the alternative is if they want to get an ordinance.
Yeah, the, the, the ordinance that we were just discussing is dead. It didn't receive enough votes to be moved forward. So as it stands right now, the elections in Holiday Island will be by...
At large.
By, at large. There's, there's a 30-day, there's a 30-day period starting tomorrow that where you can petition for, to, to have, I forget the technical term on it, but you can petition have...
A referendum.
A referendum.
Yeah. Petition for a referendum on the, on the subject.
Thank you for the clarification.
And I, you know...
There's a statute.
Yeah, there is a statute on it.
And, Mr. Mayor, to be clear, a referendum means a petition formed by a group of people to put it on a ballot at an election.
Right.
So it won't change until November 22 if it goes that way.
And I think you have to get 25% of the registered voters.
Yeah, that's in the, in the statute. And I'm not sure what kind of predicament that would put us in as far as future elections. We wouldn't have how the council members are going to be elected resolved. Well, I, I guess, you know, the, the petition to, for the referendum does not make the ordinance invalid, right?
Correct, it'd be for the next election.
Right, right. So the first election will be at large no matter what. And then, but it could be on the ballot to be changed at the next election.
I think that's important for people to know what their alternative is.
And I think the process is, is that you bring the petition to the city council. West has to verify that the petition is valid. And then it would go to the county to be put on the ballot.
What's the percentage of...
Yeah, I don't want to strike you like you'd have to read the, read the ordinance. Okay. Sir? Yes? Can I make a comment? Yes.
Al Sallett, 22 Bucksin Lane. I regret that we've lost the audience that may need to know this information. There is another way that they could change the election process. They could run for the city council. They could check out the ordinances needed to do that. They could do, you know, volunteer their time to serve on the city council, get elected from their ward, from their wards, and then form a new election process to the ordinance to the city, I believe. Thank you.
Anybody that gets themselves elected can propose an ordinance.
Or they can storm on.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is consideration of ordinance 2021-017, an ordinance adopting the building code as part of the Holiday Island Municipal Code for the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas. I will take, I will entertain a motion to suspend the dispense of the rule requiring the reading of an ordinance in full on three different days and read ordinance number 2021-017 by title only.
So move.
Ken made a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Jerry seconded it. Any discussion? We'll call a vote. And by the way, this does require four votes to pass. Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor? Right. So I'll read the ordinance by title only. Ordinance 2021-017, an ordinance adopting the building code as part of the Holiday Island Municipal Code for the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas. That is the title of the ordinance.
We do not have a emergency clause in this, so...
Correct. So it'll be, it'll be in effect 30 days from tonight if it passes.
Why? I thought we got a day on emergency.
Emergency clause.
Right.
Okay, excuse me. Okay, the reading, the rule requiring the reading of the ordinance, well, I already did that. I'm gonna get this rubber rules of order stoked down one month before I get elected out of I will now entertain a motion to, no, that's the emergency clause. I will now entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2021-017.
So move.
We have a, a motion by Jerry. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ken seconded it. Any discussion? I can just make a comment for the few people that are still here yet. The building code that we put together is primarily or substantially the same as the building code that the current planning commission that reported to the developer has been using for several years. It, and, and I also, we also went back and pulled information from other representative cities and stuff. But by and large, what it does is just adopts all the national standards, is the state national standards, like the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, the Arkansas Gas Code, the Arkansas Electrical Code, which is also the National Electric Code and stuff like that. There are some things in here that are specific to Holiday Island, like hooking up sewer and water and, you know, there's a few things in here that are specific to Holiday Island, but it's not a great departure from what's been done in the past. And also included in the building code is provisions for the city hiring a building inspector. So along with approving the ordinance, we're basically approving a position of building inspector.
By the way, Dan, I did get an answer from Eureka about what you asked them to ask.
Okay. Talk later.
I don't know. I read it two or three times, very carefully, and I'm in favor of it.
No other discussion, we'll take a roll call vote. Okay. Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor? When the ordinance passes, we now have a building code. Uh, let's see. Oh, I was going to mention that there, there is a section of code...
We're posting in publication.
There's a section of code that says that you have to, I thought I ran copies there. Yeah. There's a section of the code that says that you have to, that if, if you reference codes by title only, then you have to have copies of that code available, you know, in the city office for anybody to review if they want to.
Talking about state codes and so...
Yeah, like, like the fire prevention code. You know, we can't expect everybody to have their own copy of it in their pocket. So in order to comply with that requirement, and we have to post that that's available. So in order to comply with that requirement, I have set up a PC laptop in the office down there with, and I took everything off the laptop except what I added for these codes. And I put links to all of these codes on there. So we will post that along with the ordinance to comply with the, so here's five copies to post with the ordinance.
For reference, that's statute 1455-206, section B.
Yeah, I think I put that on, on that copy. So, so that will be posted along with it. Very little is free in this world, including copies of, of codes. So what I have shortcutted, there was three, I think three of the codes that we referenced. I could actually download a PDF of it and, and just link it to the PDF on, on the laptop. Most of them are linked to a... Yeah, so it's a website that, that you can get a subscription to that keeps you, so that every time you, every time you go to that code, you're guaranteed that it's the latest and greatest code for your state. So you don't have to, you know, if we went out and bought a $365 hardbound version of the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code tomorrow, that could be obsolete and we wouldn't have anybody watching out for us to know that it's obsolete. So...
So a subscription gives the public access to it that we type over?
No. It, we have to, it has to be available for people to...
I understand that, but the, the subscription, who pays for that?
Oh, I would assume we do since we're required to be able to...
So it allows general access?
The code, the, the building inspector is gonna need access to all those codes anyway. So, now I don't know if this is the only, it's called, I forget what it's called, but anyway. I think that what I have is a free temporary use of those, of those, type of those codes. And, and there's a subscription, I think it's $33 a month to, but I, I really couldn't figure out what you were getting with the subscription because when you went to the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, it gave you the option of a $33 subscription. But then when you went to the Arkansas Plumbing Code, the exact same thing came up, you know, offering you a $33 subscription. I don't believe that you need to spend $33 for every single one of these codes. I think that $33 a month buys you a co- comprehensive coverage of all the codes.
It's a month.
A month, yeah. But if we bought them, I mean, they're high in dollars.
Can the links to this be put on our website where we post the ordinance?
Yeah, but I would want to wait until we know that we have a permanent solution to the digital or the electronic link to the code.
And having them in the office available makes sure that someone who doesn't have access to the internet has them available too.
Well, that, that's why I put the laptop in the office. That way people can come in and, and if they don't have a computer, they can come to you.
I mean, if there is a way that we can put the links on the website, we'll do it. But that, that should be our primary.
Yeah. So, does anybody want to volunteer to, to see what the, I, I have all the pertinent codes listed here. Does somebody want to volunteer to see what, you know, what that subscription would all entail and, and...
I don't understand the question. You either buy it or you don't, right?
Well, the, there's what, I don't, but I don't know what I'm buying. And, and, you know, so somebody's gonna have to contact these people and say, I, I give you $33 a month, what am I getting for it? And they'll say, if they say, well, for 30, for the first 33, you get the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code. And then for another 33, you can get the plumbing code, and another 33, you can get the gas code. That's getting pretty expensive and we may want to look for an alternative. But if it's $33 and forevermore, any code that, you know, that you ever have to worry about is gonna be an up-to-date version.
Have we checked with any other cities?
No.
Is it what they...
I'll do it.
Okay.
But what comes to mind is that there's got to be, it may not be updated every time they make a change, but it would be the latest version that we, we had. But sometimes if you're looking for some of these state statutes, it, it sends you to Justia Law, which is sometimes a subscription service. But if you look hard enough, you find the latest. So we have...
We use Code of Art, Code of Art is...
Lexus Maxx.
Lexus, yeah, Lexus, Lexus.
Without subscription.
So...
Always has a way to...
Yeah, and we did this, when I was running manufacturing times, we did this for, for, you know, environmental codes and stuff like that because there's just no way that you can, you'd need a full-time person trying to keep up with all of them.
The only thing that, act that comes to my mind is whether for $33, you can open it up to 2,000 residents to, to look at.
That's what I'm thinking too.
And be limited.
Exactly.
The city.
Well, find out. For now, I'm gonna check them tomorrow morning. If the links are still working, then I'll check them every day and make sure they're still working so we're in compliance. If they never seem to stop working, then maybe we don't need a subscription.
So what, what, what is the website that, can you send me the link?
I'll send you, I'll send you. All right. Next on the agenda is a resolution that, that our, wants from us. And so I would entertain... And, uh, so, I would entertain a motion to put Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero twenty-five, a resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Holiday Island to utilize street aid to street monies for the following project, Holiday Island Overlay, on the floor for consideration.
I'll move to put Resolution twenty twenty-one oh twenty-five on the floor.
Will I have a second?
I have a second.
Ten seconds. Lynn made the motion, ten seconds. Any discussion? And for a resolution, we can just take a aye vote. All in favor, aye, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I'll read the resolution. And like I said, when I sent this out to everybody, that, uh, this is, um, with only one minor change, this is, uh, this came from them. So, they sent, it's just like when you apply for a grant. They send you the form, and you fill it out, and then send it back to them. And for the resolution, they, they did the same thing. So, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero twenty-five, a resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Holiday Island to utilize street aid to street monies for the following project, Holiday Island Overlay. Whereas the town of Holiday Island understands that the state aid street program funds are available for certain projects at the following participation rates. Reconstruction and resurfacing, preliminary engineering, the state pays a hundred percent. Construction of city projects right-of-way, um, we pay a hundred percent, but there's no cost. Utilities, we pay a hundred percent, but there's no cost. Construction, the state pays a hundred percent. Construction engineering, the state pays a hundred percent. And city projects programmed, um, but not let to contract, all phases, we pay a hundred percent. And I'll explain that when we get, when I get done reading it. Now be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that section one, the city will participate in accordance with the designated responsibilities in this project. Section two, the mayor or his designee is hereby authorized and directed to execute all appropriate agreements and contracts necessary to expedite the construction of this city project. Section three, uh, the city agrees upon completion of the project to assume the maintenance of the right-of-way by city forces and/or others, including utilities, I added suburban improvement districts, and, and individuals with prevailing Department of Transportation regulations. Section four, the city pledges its full support and hereby authorizes the Arkansas Department of Transportation to initiate action to implement this project. Passed and approved. Wrong gate on here. Passed and approved by the City Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date of November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And we'll have to update the signed copy, because we didn't update it since the last meeting. The, uh, let me explain, the, uh, the, when, when they say construction a hundred percent, that's their three hundred thousand dollars worth of the project. When they say, uh, city projects programmed but not let to contract, that's the extra two hundred and fifty thousand that they will manage for us as far as the total project, but we have to pay for it. So, they do all the engineering and all of that, uh, but they don't cover the construction part of, of that extra two hundred and fifty thousand. So, for all practical purposes, the state is paying to pave Hawk Drive and Hawk Lane, and, and the city, for the most part, will be paying to resurface two stretches of, of State Line Drive.
Any movement on the declaratory judgment?
Um, why don't we finish this, and then we can, I, I do have an update on that.
Mr. Mayor, is there another document that defines Holiday Island Overlay? To name those streets and distances and points specifically?
There is a, there, the, the construction estimate is, I have it in the office.
Okay, but it's defined clearly?
It defines, yes.
What they're gonna do?
There's, there's a map with a red line of the sections that are being done.
Yeah, we saw that five, six months ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I talked to Jonathan Clements this morning, 'cause I had asked him that one time. He, he called, I think I told you this before, maybe, maybe not, but he called a couple of weeks ago and said, "I have great news. All the projects are being moved up." And he said, "Instead of meeting in, uh, February to award the contracts or, or to award the grants, we're now gonna meet on, uh, December eighth. And, um, so by January thirteenth or something like that, we can be putting things out for bids and everything, and, and, and we're gonna try to get as many projects, um, started in February as possible." And I said, "That's great news. Can you put us last on the list?" Because we have to be sure that we have our two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the bank, you know, when they start the project. So, I talked to him this morning, and he said that, um, that they will put us out. The furthest they can put us out is February twenty-third, uh, which he said that, um, you know, that with the time it takes to get the bids and everything else, um, he said it would take about a month before, uh, they would let the contract. And, uh, so that gives us to, you know, March twenty-third. And, you know, that's not the end of it, you know? If we, if we, uh, need a little more time, you know, we can probably get a little bit more time. But they're trying to get all of these projects done as early in the year as possible before all the construction companies get, uh, busy spending, you know, Rescue Plan Act money and infrastructure bill money and everything else.
How, where do we at on, how much money we got in roads right now? It's like a hundred and sixty, something like that, isn't it?
Can, can we, well...
Okay, go ahead. I thought you were done.
Well, I was just gonna take a vote on the resolution.
Okay, vote on the resolution, then, then we'll go. Excuse me.
I can, I can send out...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Point of clarification, what ward is Hawk Drive in?
In State Line?
Which one is the island? Is the island one or three?
No, that, that is on...
Hawk Drive.
Holiday Island Drive is the, is the boundary between, uh...
No, but Hawk Drive you said.
One and two, or something like that. So, Hawk Drive, Hawk Drive is the webbing.
I think, I think two.
Now, what, is, 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 is the island one or three?
Island one.
So, then Hawk Drive would be in three.
Oh, okay. Oh, so we're representing more.
Along with, along with most of what's gonna be repaid on Holiday Island, on State Line Drive. Um, uh, we can send out, uh, an updated, um, cash flow thing, um, to everybody tomorrow. 'Cause I, I did that once before. I did that for the last meeting.
Well, I was just gonna comment, uh...
We have never seen...
About saying March. Uh, see, we've got about a hundred and thirty thousand in the street fund right now.
Okay.
And it'd be December, January, February, March, four more months. By the tenth of March, if there was another sixty-five thousand, that'd be close to two hundred thousand in the street fund by that time.
And then, you know, I think we talked once before that we, we, you know, we will, we will put money into a reserve fund out of the general fund at the end of the year that we may have to loan to the street fund if all of this happens too fast, and if we don't get any money from the county.
Uh, and, and we'll ask for donations.
And didn't you say that might be about fifty thousand that might be reserved at the end of the year for that?
Yeah.
So, that would be...
Yeah. And that's what I told Jonathan. I said, "The way it looks right now," I thought, I said, "I, I'm pretty sure we'll have it covered." And he said, "Well, if, if something goes haywire, they, you know, there's probably..."
You're offering your house for your credit card?
Yeah.
We'll use, we'll use Dan's credit card.
Get the limit increased.
All right. If there's no further discussion, we'll take a roll call vote on the resolution.
Okay, um... Make sure I got the right one. Okay. Councilmember Pittman?
I'll get to go first.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Dubus?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, the resolution passes. We'll get these signed and sent to, uh, to the back of Jonathan. Just between you and me, every single one of these has the eighteen, not all, all of them, so...
Okay.
We'll have to run new cover pages before we sign them on...
Okay.
Or the date, the page that says the date will have to be changed before we sign them.
Okay.
All right, what's next on the agenda?
Posting locations.
Resolution, uh, just discussion on Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero twenty-four, on posting locations, discussion on, um, you know, we, we passed Resolution oh twenty-four. When we couldn't post anymore in the rec center, we moved that board up here into the city office, uh, where it's been ever since. But, um, you know, I was, I was kinda looking for a more permanent place for it, and maybe a more accessible place for it. And the, um, you know, in the, uh, in the clubhouse parking lot, we have that big trail, uh, trailhead kiosk for the, the trails and all the amenities and all we have. Well, the backside of that is under roof, sort of, and totally available. So, you know, if we buy another outdoor one, the one we have in years, an indoor one, so we would have to buy another outdoor one. But we could mount it on the backside of that and then put some paving blocks down that Lynn and I are really good at doing.
Ah, wait a minute, it's not doing so well out there.
Yeah, it is.
Sorry.
I, I went and talked to Dan yesterday and walked over your little papers, and it was very nice.
Good.
It just happens to be a low spot where all the pea gravel, uh, accumulates. But, um, anyway, if, uh, if, if people think that that would be a better place for it...
I think that's a great spot for it. A lot of people go there, it's easy parking.
Yeah, I mean, anybody could go up there. It may be the most handy.
But we don't, we don't have one over on the island, though, right? Since the rec center got wrecked?
No, no.
I thought they moved that board inside the island.
No, they wouldn't. There was no more space.
But if, if we buy another, uh, outdoor, could we not mount it some way in the pavilion there? To keep one on the island?
Okay. You mean wanting to picnic to do?
Yeah, picnic to do.
It's just not frequented very often.
That'd be so good.
I don't know where we'd mount it, too.
Well, once we have, I mean, that one is not...
The island room backside.
Yeah, an outside wall at the rec center or the island room might be a better alternative if, if I said we let us do it.
Did you say outside the island room?
Yeah, an outside wall in the island room.
We looked at that initially, and, uh, it's that, uh, I don't know if it's faux or not, but it's got that rocky exterior, and, uh, there's really no path to it because it'd be in garden space, it'd be off the sidewalk, to mount on either side of the door. Uh, on the picnic side, there's no sidewalk around, so it didn't look like a good option. That's why I said we'd have to go someplace else. But we did look at the island room building.
And the pavilion doesn't have any walls, you know?
Whatever we do outdoors needs to be a glued outdoor unit, so it doesn't get water in or in the documents.
How much more expensive are the weatherproof ones?
Roughly twice the amount, so...
So, what, maybe pipes?
Three hundred dollars or something.
So, talking six hundred?
Yeah, or five hundred, probably.
It doesn't seem reasonable.
Well, that would be a permanent.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's a lot of that, what you said.
The, the...
Yeah, it's on the west side, so it'll take the weather front for sure. You know, any wind carrying water will hit that board, that little bit of roof won't help. So, it'd be a good unit.
I just think, and we can, we can actually, you know, put something on the front side, on the parking lot side, just a, a, you know, a little sign that says, um, "City Posting Board" or something like that on the, on the reverse side. You know, I think I can probably count on one finger how many people have actually read any of the documents that get posted.
I've seen...
It's a legal requirement.
I've seen people at the board in Sunfest.
Really?
Is there one inside the clubhouse?
I've been looking for handyman.
Is there one inside the clubhouse?
There's, there's one in the clubhouse.
No, I think... Didn't you say it's on the hallway, through the ballroom of the pro side?
All right, well, um, maybe by the next meeting, I mean, there's no urgency on this, but, you know, at some point in the future, I think we need to, um, we need to find a, a better home for that tip board, and, um... You know, and either another resolution would do that, or at some point, we need to pass what is Title One of, uh, of the municipal code, which deals with the things like meetings, you know, how we're gonna conduct meetings. Everything we did by resolution early on, we need to put into, um, mu- municipal format for, for Title One. All right, um, two hundred and forty-dollar donation to the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development, something or other, district. I got this from, uh, them. I have talked to Jamie Swersky in, uh... They're, they actually called me from Harrison. So, I don't know if there's, 'cause I know we've al- also dealt with the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District with people in the, uh, Rogers, Bentonville area. So, I don't know how big this district is, but, um, what they, what, what this money is for, your contribution of local funds to support the district has allowed our staff to assist in securing grants and loan funds for our members to create additional job opportunities, blah, 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 blah. To carry out our program of work, the district respectfully requests that the Board of Commissioners, uh, this, this went to the Board of Commissioners, but now, now they communicate with me instead of the district. They're looking for two hundred and forty dollars, and, um... I think this constitute membership in the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District, I think is what it is.
They call it a donation?
Because it says your continued membership.
They call, but they call it a donation?
They call it a donation. 'Cause maybe they're not, because they're an economic development district, maybe they're not allowed to solicit, uh, any other kinds of phones or something. You want me to find out more about it and then bring it up again?
I think so.
I, I think it's important to know it.
I thought, I thought it was a donation for some, um...
I, I don't know, you know, I don't know.
Do they base on population or what?
They're counting.
Even who they are, no, they do.
Well, I'm, uh...
Blue table looks until the next meeting. I obviously need to come more prepared if I'm gonna ask for money.
All right, this, uh, there is the Northwest, N W A E D D, Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District. Uh, I've got their, uh, their, uh, strategy plan, forty-two pages.
Ooh, don't read it.
Yeah, I hope you read that, too.
Can you smiceize it?
No.
Oh.
But, all right, it shows what counties, we're definitely in there.
Do they include Benton also?
Uh, Benton, Washington Carroll, Madison... Uh, Benton, Washington Carroll, Madison, Newton, Boone, Marion, Cersey, Baxter. So it goes about halfway across the state.
I know the district has worked with them in the past, uh, trying to secure grant money and stuff. Um, but because they were an improvement district and not a city, they, it was kind of like, if there was leftover money, they would consider a request from the district. But if we're, uh, because we're a city now, I think we can be a little bit more bona fide and I really do think we need to work with these people.
Yeah.
But I need to find out if this constitutes membership or if this is strictly a donation and if it is, you know, what pot does it go into? I will find out. All right, um, public comments? Any comments from anybody left?
Okay, next time, I'm sitting by the door. I'll sell like twenty-two bucks, can I? And I would just like to again, thank you all for all the time you put in. I know Lynn does a ton of research on stuff and the others know you too from on that. Get your nose out of the book long enough to talk to you. But, so anyways, the hours of, the hours that you put into your job and also for the fairness that you bring to the table, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? Right, then, council member comments?
We can have one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Gerald Long, I took his place. Uh, I think you all had a rare opportunity tonight to listen to what people in your community have to say and I think you missed the opportunity. There will be consequences, I'm quite sure, the next election, if you wish to stand for our election again, I can assure you that with my outpost to see you defeated. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, that's why we stand for election, if you want the candidate to go forward. Um, okay, I did, uh, on the, uh, the, uh, turn, um, the, um, property tax for roads, the half of the three mil what we're supposed to get. Um, I did talk to Justin today, he did finally, uh, get to talk to Tony Rogers. Uh, it didn't go the way he expected. Uh, Tony started it while he, he, uh, he's, he's still at, Tony is still advocating the longstanding position of the county that, uh, the, uh, taxes in question are, are, uh, for a tax year that was prior to our being incorporated. And he said, "At most, we would be entitled to a prorated share of, um, from when we incorporated in twenty-twenty to the end of the year." In other words, like three weeks' worth of, a year's worth of money. And, um, Justin explained to him that that's, again, that's not the way the law's written, it's not the Attorney General's opinion. And if you were talking about sales tax or something like that, that, um, you know, that is something that you could prorate because you collect it as you go. But property tax is for a com- is for a full year and, um, and the law says that it's payable to the cities in the year it's collected. So he, Tony requested an- another copy of the Attorney General's opinion, which Justin sent to him and then, um, he said, um, he's gonna have to get some advice and get back to us. And, um, so, um, Justin's gonna try to call him tomorrow morning. And, uh, cause we agree, Justin and I agree, that there needs to be a time limit on this. And, um.
So he has not filed with the?
He has not filed it yet, he was trying to resolve it without going apart, which I give him credit for.
I'm glad he did.
And, um, so, and, and, and there was discussion about Tony should check with the, with the, um, Municipal League again and with the Arkansas, something of counties.
Counties.
Association of Counties.
Association of Counties.
Yeah.
Who Justin had already consulted with and they agreed with the Attorney General's opinion. So anyway, he's gonna cut it off tomorrow morning, uh, send him a letter or email him a letter confirming their conversation from yesterday. And then, uh, he's gonna call me again tomorrow afternoon. And if we've not made any progress with the county, we're gonna, we're going to, uh, pick a deadline date in the very near future that, uh, you know, a drop dead date for the county to respond or we'll file the, the, um, you know, the.
We're gonna wait until we see that they're not gonna respond to do that? I mean, why would we not put them on a deadline?
Well, if they don't respond tomorrow.
Okay.
Then there, there will be a deadline set tomorrow.
Okay, that should be twenty-four hours.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, we're serious.
Yeah.
We told you to proceed.
Well, and, and this has been going on for nine months. It's not like it's, uh, something to have an ad hoc opportunity to, uh, to, uh, review. So, anyway, uh, we'll see what, what comes of it tomorrow. All right, uh, any other council member comments?
Where are we on the sheriff?
No, we're, I haven't been working on it. That's gonna have to carry over into next year and to many other pressing things. The district is moving forward with renewing their contract with the deputy, so.
How are we gonna get by with the requirement for the district court if we have?
We just won't have one until we resolve something with sheriff.
I think we should, on a different topic, I think we need to determine what we're going to do to change our, uh, Zoom format to a broadcast instead of a, uh, interactive session. Um, I guess that'll take modifying a resolution.
Right.
Changing a resolution somehow, so we need to kind of figure out a plan on how we achieve that.
Any council member can propose a resolution.
Well, I, I'll, I'll be glad to write a resolution for the next meeting, but do we get to con- do, would, would we want a special meeting or anything to enact that resolution so it's available for our next meeting? Or our next regular meeting or something?
That, the, the original resolution is on, online, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we can find that and see what we need.
Well, I, I don't think it mentioned Zoom, though, does it?
No. No, and, you know, the, the resolution you're talking about is to, really to, I guess, clarify going forward so there's no confusion, but it's not, it's, it, it, it's not required for us to, to do what we, you know, to, to go into broadcast only mode because we were never required to do Zoom in the first place. So we don't need permission to stop doing Zoom. So.
Well, maybe we just.
What's our resolution saying? I don't recall.
I don't know, I, I have to.
Linda, Linda, look that up.
We'd have to follow up.
Well, I mean, it could just easily be what y'all talked about earlier, that it'll be broadcast only, there'll be no chat, there'll be no chance to comment, uh.
I just wanted to figure out the best way to start that process.
I don't know.
Does that require a resolution?
Put it in the announcement to, to the next meeting.
We were thinking about doing a resolution for the planning commission, I know.
The planning commission talked about doing that, they volunteered to draft one.
Just change it to City Council.
But, so, uh, like on the, on the planning commission meeting, would you present it at the meeting in which you start doing that? Or would you start doing it at the following meeting?
Probably after we, after we approve the change.
At the following?
Yeah, probably after.
That's fine.
How many people are on Zoom tonight or what?
We had seven in, in the beginning, I believe, uh, we're down to like zero. No, we're down to five now. We might've had eight, seven or.
All right, and, uh, well.
Continue on the way we are for one more meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. Prepare a resolution for the next meeting and we'll enact it when we get to the meeting after that.
Probably need to amend the budget in December. It looks to be like for our expenditures, we've got two accounts probably that are over budget, the capital outlay and the fire contract with the district.
That one over budget.
Well, by a hundred and sixty-seven dollars, I think. Cause I think our budget, my schedule, I think is forty-five, eight, three, three, and I think we're paying forty-six.
Forty-six, rob it up. Okay, well, we, we can work that out before next meeting. Cause in the next meeting, we really need to approve the budget for next year too.
Okay.
So, um, we will get that all to everybody at least a week before our next meeting.
So, so are we going to try to meet with the sheriff and determine what he's gonna charge us?
Um, yes, but just to bill and quote stuff and everything, just had to take priority.
No pressure.
And it's gonna be a long and tedious process. I did talk to the sheriff and it's gonna be a long and tedious process because, you know, we're gonna have to work out, we're gonna have to work out a deal with the, with the sheriff and then put that into a proposal and give it to Jack, who will present it to the, uh, quorum court, who's going to have to approve it ex-budget, you know, outside of the budget because they, uh, you know, they will have already approved their operating budget for next year. So, um, so, you know, we're gonna probably have to cover the majority of the cost, whatever, whatever it is. If it's cost neutral to the county and the sheriff is in favor of it, I don't think there'll be any problem. But if it, if it's not cost neutral to the county, now, we may have some hard sledding getting it through the quorum court. All right, any other council member comments? All right, meeting schedule? The next meeting is our regularly scheduled meeting, but next week, or it, it always seems like it's next week.
We, we are, then we already have, we already had it for November, during December.
Tomorrow's December, yeah, so.
And it falls in Christmas week.
Third, third Tuesday or?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem doing it on twenty-first.
I don't have anywhere to go.
I'll be here.
There's a quorum, I'll get it.
Okay.
Help the Mrs. Claus.
Announcements, any announcements?
Twenty-one, December twenty-first.
Motion to adjourn?
Summon.
During the motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
You have a second.
It's, it's.
All council members say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, for adjourn?